Hello and welcome to another edition of Daily Clout. I'm your host, Brianna Sagal, and I'm so excited today. I am joined by Representative Tammy Nichols from Idaho. Representative Nichols is a, she represents District 11, which is Canyon County, Idaho. She is a mother of five, and she's not only a small business owner, but she holds a degree in science. And prior to her term as a legislator, she worked in both banking and the medical world. Representative Nichols is well-known as a people-atician. I have followed her post, and I love staying apprised of going-ons in Idaho. Tammy is one of those individuals who is very, she feels it's very important to keep constituents apprised of everything that's happening in the legislature. And she is one of those individuals who are in office who does report and feels accountable to the individual. So we are so happy to have her on today. And we are going to address very briefly what's called the NIMS, or National Incident Management Order, which has recently come out of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. And this is regarding the school board and the school districts, parents attending and how they should respond, how they should act. And so without further ado, Representative Nichols, thank you so much for joining me today and being willing to share all of your information with our audience at Daily Clout. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for having me on. Yeah, you know, we are seeing so many reports now going on, and we have over the last, especially the last couple of years, where parents are getting really involved. They're not happy with what's going on with their schools and in their school districts. So they're attending school board meetings like crazy. It's been going on here in my state and in states all across the nation, which is a good thing. I think that's a really positive thing. Parents need to be involved and they need to know. But unfortunately, it's not being met with, with, you know, the school districts, the school boards being as happy that they're attending, it seems like. Because most of the time they're coming there and they want to address their grievances. They have issues with what's happening, whether it be, you know, mask mandates or the shutting down of schools or sex in education. There's so many different, critical race theory is a huge one. So there's so many different things that's transpiring right now, and parents are not happy. And they want these grievances addressed. But I think it has kind of taken the school boards by storm because they're not used to having parents involved at this level. And, and so there's been some issues that have transpired because of that.
You know, I was sort of taken aback when I saw the letter from the National School Board Association requesting that the FBI look into parents. And, you know, there was that label of domestic terrorism, and it just shook me to my core. I'm also a mother, and I also attend school board meetings. I do recognize that there is a give and take, and I, you know, I do recognize that it is a community partnership, and it is not necessarily well-received when we, as parents, go in and are very, you know, upset, and then we're not there for the rest of the year to be involved in policy or decision-making. So I understand that balance. However, these are elected members that are accountable, you know, to the taxpayers.
So, right, right.
Where do you see that balance? How do you see that fitting in? I mean, what exactly is the national incident? What, I mean, what, what does that even mean? What is the?
Yeah, so to answer a few of your, what, a few of your points that you brought up. So, yes, we have parents, again, that are not happy with what's transpiring. They don't feel like they're being heard. They don't feel like they're being listened to. You know, they've demanded for their kids to be back in school. We're seeing right now in Chicago where they have shut down in-person learning again. And if you don't have kids and you have not ever been put into that position, it's so hard when, when, and it's not that schools are supposed to be babysitters. I don't agree that schools are supposed to be babysitters, but, you know, kids are used to going to school. Parents are used to taking them. They're used to having them at school, hopefully learning good things. And, and then when you just shut it down, now parents are stuck and, and teachers are stuck. I mean, everybody's stuck. And we know now, you know, with shutting down the schools, there's been several reports out now about the mental health issues that have been transpiring because of that, with the lockdowns and with the, with school closures and the mask mandates and all that. So we've seen these ramifications that are happening. And so parents are going to their school board meetings and they're demanding action. They are demanding their school boards, like you said, people that are elected and supposed to be representing the members in their community. They're going to them and demanding that they do something. And it's to the point now, unfortunately, where, again, they don't feel like they're being listened to. And so, yes, sometimes they're, they're a little intimidating. Sometimes they're raising their voice and they're yelling. Sometimes there are some threats made. I mean, we, we want things to be cordial and be able to have a conversation. But that's the other problem is when, when you go to these school board meetings, and I've experienced it myself, you go demanding answers and you don't get any. They, actually, most school boards are told, when they're trained, to not answer questions during the meeting. And so you can understand, yeah, you can understand. Yeah, they're, they're absolutely told, do not answer questions. And, you know, so you can imagine parents being infuriated, going because they want answered. And they're there and they, they tell everything that's going on, all the issues that they have, the problems that they see, and then nothing's done about it. So, so some of these school board meetings have gotten heated. You know, and, you know, and parents are their child's advocate. I mean, there's no better advocate for your child than you. And so when your child is being put in a situation, when you're being put in a situation and you can't get any answers, people are going to get frustrated and upset with that very, very quickly. And I've seen it in my own area. I've seen it, you know, like I said, across the nation in different meetings that I've observed on, online. And so it's just, it's unfortunate. So now the school board, so yeah, you have the National School Board Association that came out with a letter and a request from the FBI saying, no, we need to investigate these parents that are coming to these school board meetings. The parents are being labeled as domestic terrorists, which is just absolutely mind-blowing to me. And, and, and so, and then you have the National School Board Association that's, that's pushing that stuff out. So there was a huge push that has transpired across the nation where, because, School Board Association, so it's kind of like an umbrella. And, you know, the, the states pay membership dues. There is money that is paid to the National School Board Association to be members. So there's been a huge push. Once that letter came out, the backlash on it was, was tremendous. And so many states, I think they're up in the twenties now, have actually revoked their membership from the National School Board Association. Different states have written letters, legislators. Here in Idaho, I wrote a letter. I had over forty other legislators sign onto it, asking our state board, our Idaho State Board Association to withdraw their membership. And we got little response from it, so we're going to have to go into another step now and try something different. I emailed them two or three times afterwards, asking for their response. And really, the response that they came out with was very vanilla. They need to, they need to step back. We should not be funding organization that is going to put parents into, into a box like that and label them as domestic terrorists. You know, and there's, there's other issues that I have with the National School Board Association too, but that is a huge one. And so, yeah, we need to, we need to ask them to withdraw, and they need to withdraw their membership.
Wow. So is that something that parents can do on a national basis? They can maybe take a form letter or something? Is what you wrote, is that available online? Can parents take that to their legislators and ask that they would send that as well, or?
Sure. I think it is available online. We did actually sign on with a national organization, a women's group, that also wrote a letter nationally and had several congressional members and many organizations that signed on to that letter. And then I wanted to do something, so that went to the national. I wanted to do something in our state. So I think what will be best is I, we're going to take this other step, and I think we need to go to our school boards directly and ask them to stop their paying their membership dues to the state School Board Association, because that's going to have a similar impact. It might not, it hopefully will give the School Board Association some incentive to stop their membership. Because each school board pays into the, the state School Board Association, and then that in turn goes into the National School Board Association, is my understanding. So we're going to be going to the, the school districts next. And yes, parents can definitely ask their school board members to stop, stop the membership.
And I would imagine that membership would take away a lot of the local controls that are part of our founding principles, if you will. That idea of decentralization is really important right now as we're watching these sort of unilateral decisions being made in a, in a top-down approach to governance. It seems like taking away that, that overall and large national control would be a really good way for people and parents to have.
Right. Absolutely. Actually, yeah, actually, to your point, it returns local control. You don't have a national, I mean, you can say all you want that, oh, they're just a national organization. We do our own thing. Well, I can guarantee you that whatever a national group is doing, and if you're paying membership dues to them and you are utilizing, you know, any of the materials or anything that they're, that they're pushing, you're participating in that national organization. And what they're doing is going to trickle down to the local, local level eventually.
Sure. And it's not always, you know, some nefarious plan as.
Right. Yeah.
But, you know, teachers and, and school board members, they have full-time jobs and, or, excuse me, school board members have full-time jobs. Usually, school board positions are not a paid position. So if you have this, you know, national sort of overview for policymaking, it does make things a lot easier. It probably gets right to the point where it's not exactly a fair representation of the, maybe, school district or area that you're representing.
Right, right. Because it's really easy to kind of hand things off and be like, well, we'll just utilize whatever. You know, they're already putting everything together. We'll just utilize whatever they're doing. So, yeah, so to me, it does kind of return that local control back to the area, and you don't have a third party in there helping to make decisions. You know, it stays more with the local, local community. But to go on, so what we're seeing now is we're seeing resolutions. This is the first one in Idaho that I've seen that has come out in Coeur d'Alene, which it's titled authorizing the National Incident Management System, or NIMS, as the basis for all incident management in the Coeur d'Alene Public School District. And I think this is their response for some issues that they've been having occur at some of their school board meetings. Because again, they have implemented, Coeur d'Alene is, it's, it's up north. It's quite a ways from me. It's at the other end of the state. I'm kind of down at the bottom end of the state. And they're, they're a bit more liberal up there. And so they have had mask mandates. They've had, you know, school closures, you know, different things along those lines. And again, parents are not happy with what's transpiring. And so they have been going to the school board meetings in large quantities, mind you, and vetting their frustration. And so I think this is in response to how that's occurring. Because again, I don't think the school boards actually know how to handle irate parents or parents that are, that are disagreeing with decisions being made or not wanting the decisions that are being made to actually occur. And so, yeah, so they're, they're actually wanting to utilize it. I was reading through it again, that they, the National Commission on Terrorism Act, which was put together during the 9/11 Commission, that they recommended adoption of a standardized incident command system. And so the Board of Trustees in Coeur d'Alene, which is School District 271, by virtue of authority vested in the board, do hereby establish the National Incident Management System at the district, as the district standard for incident management. So, you know, what all this is actually doing is kind of hard to say because we've never, they've never done anything like this before. But in reading it, it's saying that it's, that the federal, state, local, and tribal emergency agencies and personal, and personnel coordinate their efforts and respond to issues. So, I mean, are they going to be, you know, using some sort of hierarchy where the police come in first? If they feel that there's an incident? And what, what constitutes as an incident? I mean, if you have a parent up there and they're just mad, and they're not doing anything, you know, nefarious or violent, they're, they're mad and they want to be heard, does that constitute an incident? I mean, so we're kind of getting into these muddy waters where, what's the definition? Because I don't see a definition in here on what's considered an incident. So it could be anything.
Fascinating.
And that's kind of worrisome to me.
I, and yeah, I'm a little bit speechless, to be honest. You know, and I, and I can't imagine as, you know, as an elected representative, you're necessarily given training on how to deal with irate constituents, right? That's not really class they teach, is it?
I, you know, you learn as you go. You know, I try to, I try to just be nice to people regardless, you know, on what they're doing. So, yeah, so you, you learn as you go, but it's, it's, it's being able to be, you know, relatable with people. I mean, any, any elected position, you need to be somewhat of a people person and to be able to engage with people regardless of if they're happy or mad at you. You have to be able to handle those, those situations. So, sure.
Right. So really hearing people and I could, I guess, in trying to understand both sides, obviously, as a mother, I understand, you know, intensely the one side. But then sitting there and having made these decisions seemingly from the perspective of protecting public health and doing, you know, the best that I could with the decision, or, excuse me, with the information that I had at the time, I think it would be very difficult to take on that amount of fury and anger from individuals. So I can certainly see why there needs to be a process in place. But I think that it's a good possibility, this is a potentially a step too far. And is there anything else? Is there maybe legislation going in? Is there something that people can work on or work towards in order to sort of streamline or outline a process, a better process, where parents feel heard and school board members don't feel attacked? Is that maybe something that you guys are doing?
Yeah, I think you're kind of hitting the right direction there. You know, again, when people don't feel that they're heard and they are, you know, based on our constitution, we are allowed to air grievances to our government. And it doesn't specify what level of government that is. To me, it's any elected position. Anyone that's involved in that process in the governmental system, you know, you're, you're, you're the one that gets to hear things regardless. You know, if you're the one that's, that's there in the chair, or you're the one that's on the floor, or you're the one that's on the phone, or whatever the case may be, somebody is going to come and talk to you about something that they're not happy with. But when people are not felt like they're being listened to and they don't feel like they're getting any answers, that's when you end up with problems, with situations. And I can tell you, a lot of these school board meetings, again, across the nation, here in Idaho as well, they have started having police officers present, you know, to keep things under control and, you know, all these other things. Unfortunately, over the last many years, and education's actually what brought me into this whole realm of politics to begin with as a mother, because they tell you, you know, when you get mad, you run for office. And that is kind of what happens a lot of the time. And I was seeing things happening in education that I was not happy with. I could not get answers from either anyone that was elected, even my own representatives at that time. And so I had to start doing my own research and trying to maneuver the governmental process as best as I could with the, with at that time, the, the bare minimum that I understood about, about government. And so, you know, but when people are not felt like they're being heard, their grievances are not being addressed. They don't feel like they have any, any say in anything that's going on. And over the last many years, it seems like there's more of a divide between parents being involved in their children's education and your school board members, your teachers' unions, all that sort of stuff. I don't see them on the same page. And I think that parents, especially over the last couple of years, because of everything that's been transpiring, I think parents really feel that they're being left out of the picture and that they have no say in what's transpiring in their child's education. And so, you know, and so, but when people are not being heard, there's a buildup that transpires. And when they finally get the opportunity to air their grievances, it's all going to come out. It's all going to come out. And they might have one issue that they're solely concerned on, but you're going to hear about ten others, I guarantee you. And when you don't have a school board, you know, or, or anyone that, that's supposed to be representing the people, when it's all one-sided, and here's somebody that's telling you their problems and they don't get anything back, even if it, even if you can't fix what they're trying to, trying to solve, if you can even just give them some direction, or at least let them know that, here, I, I hear you. I understand what you're saying. You know, here's what I think would be beneficial for you. Something along those lines. But when they're got, when they have nothing that's coming back, it's going to create problems. And so I think, I think school boards really need to start changing the way that they're handling things. If you're a representative and you're having these meetings, it's like at the legislative level. We have committees that we serve on, and they are over several different subjects. Like I, I'm on business, I'm on revenue and taxation, and I'm on agriculture. We have testimony, testimony meetings that are, that are, you know, held for the public to be able to be part of. And it's a back-and-forth type conversation. People tell us what they think. We can ask them questions. They can answer questions. I'm even glad to answer questions if they ask me questions, you know? But it's, it's a back-and-forth dialogue. So at least you feel like, hey, we're on the same page. We're not talking past each other. We're understanding where things are at. And you have, have this back-and-forth. That doesn't transpire at a lot of these other meetings. And I think that needs to change. I think if parents felt like they're being heard, that would change the mood.
That is such a great point, and I love that as a, as a solution. What if we created more steering committees and more public workshops, right? Because isn't that what it's called? It's like a workshop, or, where you work the bill, or you work the policy, and you kind of turn it over, you hear more evidence, and maybe add or, you know, retract certain amendments or.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we're working together. That's the whole point. We're working together. Yeah. And so, you know, and I have attended my school board meetings. I, I can tell you that it isn't like that, unfortunately. And I think, again, that that's where a lot of the issue comes in. And then the school board members feel like they're being attacked, which I can totally understand. But, you know, how, how are people working together? And, you know, like in my school district, you know, there's supposed to be committees that are formed, like to hand, you know, oversee new curriculums. And it even specifies in our school policies that it's supposed to be made up of parents and members of the community and that sort of stuff. I can tell you that I have asked to be on some of those, and I have been told I'm not the right kind of parent to be on that. And I'm like, okay, well, what's the right kind of parent? And then it never happens. It never happened. And so, again, I think parents really feel like they're being left out of the picture, and they have no say in what's transpiring. And that's unfortunate because your school board, your members of your school board, your school, school board in general, that's one of the closest levels to government at the local level. And so, when it's not working at that level, you're going to end up with a lot of problems.
There was a statement made recently by the current administration that the individual said that parents should not have a say in their child's education. What, what are your thoughts on that? Who has the right to raise, raise their children in this day and age?
Right. Well, parents, parents are the ones that, that have control over their child. That, that, that should be a no-brainer. That is the ultimate right, is parents are able to, you know, make decisions for their kids and do what's, what's best for their child. And so, you know, as parents, we trust when our kids enter the education system, regardless of if it's private school or public school or charter school or, or what have you. We're trusting that the people that are going to be working with our kids want the best for them, have the best intentions, all of that sort of stuff, right? And, and I, I think a lot of people feel that, you know, most of the time, the teachers, the different people that are, you know, in the schools are people from your community. And you know that, you trust them all, you know, and, and it's all good. But, yeah, when we're hearing things, I think it was, I think recently there was the Chicago Teachers Union, I want to say, came out saying that, you know, that your kids are ours. And there has been court rulings, I believe, too, saying that when your child walks into a school and they've, they've crossed that threshold, that you do not have say or, or anything over that child while they're at school.
Right. The Palmdale ruling, I believe, and it was about, it's called in loco front.
Yes, exactly. Yep, that's correct. Yeah.
Right. So what that means is when your kids walk through that door, there's actually a ruling, there's actually case precedence that states that your children then belong to the school, and the school can make decisions for your child. Once they're through that threshold, then you have no rights as a parent.
Right. And how many parents, I mean, you know, at the beginning of the school year, you're signing all sorts of forms and everything for different things. I mean, I sign stuff for my kids for, for laptops and for sports and for, you know, the, the yearbook, being able to utilize their picture and all this sort of stuff. How many of those documents say, tell you that when your child is here, you have no more rights over your child? I have not seen that yet, and I've gone through them pretty, pretty thoroughly. It does give the school, it actually, I was looking through some of my documents recently on that, and several of the documents, it actually keeps the school district, the teachers, all that sort of stuff from any liable or, or any, anything that way, which I thought was interesting too. Because now if you're telling me that the school has control over my child and they get to make the decisions, but I'm signing papers saying that they have no liability, those are kind of, you know, those don't work together. So which is it? And as a parent, I, I believe it's my constitutional right, regardless of where my child is, that I still have authority over my child regardless. Now, I might give temporary authority over to a school for certain things, like if my child gets hurt on the playground, you know? And, and they need to make a quick decision, you know, on, on how they're going to handle that. But they better notify me of what's going on, and, and that should be part of it. It's like I've taken issue with my kids participate in sports, and they have a drug testing policy. And every year when I sign that form, it basically says that, that my child can be drug tested at any time, and I don't even have to be present when that occurs. And I don't agree with that. Okay, fine, if you think my child's using drugs, okay, let's deal with that. But I better darn well, you're going to do it in my presence. You're not going to do it without me, and we're going to work on this together. It's not just one-sided. So, yeah, I don't think just because your child goes to school should take away your parental authority over your child. And, and I think that is, like I said, that's part of that division that's been taking place over the last many years, is that parents are being left out of the picture. I don't know how many people I've talked to in the, in the last probably decade where people feel that, you know, their kids are in school. You don't hardly even get report cards anymore. Everything is supposed to be online. You, besides going to parent-teacher conference, which there's really not a lot. I mean, at my school, there's not a lot of parents that attend parent-teacher conference anymore. I go because I want to know what my kid's doing and how they're doing, and to be able to talk face-to-face with the teacher. But there's a lot of things that, or curriculum even, because a lot of that's online. They don't read home books anymore. So a lot of parents feel like they have no say or control over anymore, and they're not being kept in the loop onto what's transpiring. And so that's creating, again, a lot of problems for people because they want to be involved. If you want parents to be involved in their child's education. Um, because they want to be involved. If you want parents to be involved in their child's education and in their lives, you have to give them the opportunity to be able to do that. You can't keep everything from them. And when, uh, you know, here in Idaho, one of the big things after the whole COVID thing and the shutdowns and all that started occurring. One of the big issues that really got parents riled up here was the sports, because they couldn't go watch their kids play anymore. They could, they were limited on how many people could attend, you know, it, it went through various phases. But boy, did that get parents up in arms on things. They were not happy when schools started making those decisions. And and not having any say or any input um, with it whatsoever. So I think it, I think a lot of it boils down to communication again. And I think that if school boards would be more communicative with, communicative with parents and allow dialogue to occur instead of okay, just you have three minutes, air your grievances and then sit down. You know, I think they would have a lot more opportunities and I think, I think things would be kept in a better checks and balance and people would feel like they're being heard, like they're being involved, like their, their issues are being addressed. Um, and so I think, I think the dialogue needs to change on that. And again, I think that school boards need to uh, go to the state school board association and and keep, keep their membership from, from that. So.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all of your time and your in-depth analysis and breakdown of not only what's happening in Coeur d'Alene with the National Incident Management Order. Um, but, you know, the school system in general. You're such a wealth of information. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. And I would just add really quick, you know, with the Coeur d'Alene thing. I think parents really need to start asking questions on this. Again, you know, I'm looking, I'm looking through it and it's very, it's very broad, in my opinion. Uh, things are not defined. Again, what is incident? What what constitutes an incident? Um, I I would be very concerned as a parent if this was happening in my school district.
Thank you so much. Um, so Representative Nichols, um, are you running again? And how do people get in contact with you? How do people follow you and um, watch for your blogs and all of the information that you are so great at putting out?
Sure. Yeah. So we actually start session on Monday. We're back in the legislative session. Um, I send out a weekly email while we're in session. And so, um, people can find me at nickelsforidaho.com. That's probably the easiest. Um, they can sign up for my newsletter there. Uh, they can also find out on, you know, what, I'm on pretty much every social media platform there is to some extent. And uh, and so they can follow me, you know, on Facebook, on Instagram, on on Twitter, um, Telegram. I'm on several. Most everything is under Nichols for Idaho. Um, and then they're, they're free to to contact me anytime. I'm pretty accessible. Uh, which is why I say I'm a peoplitician, because I am there. I'm I'm the, I'm the lobbyist for the people that can't afford the lobby. So, so I'm there to lobby for the people. And so they can contact me at any time if they have any questions, um, concerns, wanna give me um, input on what's happening. Uh, because I can tell you, I think school choice is gonna be a huge issue this session. Uh, we're hearing the demands from parents wanting school choice. Uh, I think it's very important that we start funding um, kids instead of funding systems. And and so parents want the options um, of of school choice, because they do, they do want good education for their kids.
Absolutely. And um, on that note, are you going to be putting forward a bill this session uh, about school choice?
So there are a few bills that are already in the works. Um, and so we'll be looking at those um, on on how that is gonna play out and what's gonna be the best option for for Idaho. Um, the House usually does a really good job at at getting good bills passed like that. Uh, our, our issue usually is with the Senate. It's not as as um, uh, open to to the school choice, um, but we are gonna be pushing it. And um, yeah, so we'll see what happens. And yes, I will be running again. Um, we're going through redistricting right now, so we're waiting to see how that all lines up. Um, and because we need some help in the Senate, I'm actually looking at running for Senate this next time. So.
Well, I hope you will pencil me.
Yeah, I know.
I get a follow-up interview. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
I look forward to following uh, your bills in the House this uh, session and um, please let us know uh, when you have updates. We're always happy to have you on the show. Thank you so much for your time. And uh, and have a wonderful day. Take care.
Thank you, you too.